Good evening and welcome to another Wednesday night Bible study here at Kingdom Fellowship Christian Center. We are grateful for your presence. We thank you for tuning in with us tonight. We apologize for running a few minutes late, but we are on the air. I want to invite you now to go ahead and like and share. If you're watching on Facebook, if you're watching on YouTube, be certain to subscribe and click the notification button so that you will be notified the next time that we are on the air. We're grateful to God for your presence and we ask that you would continue to study with us, get your Bibles, your notes ready as we go into the Word tonight. We're missing our normal announcer tonight. Lady Cece just had her second vaccination today and is dealing with the repercussions of that vaccination, but just keep her in your prayers. Let's go ahead and have a word of prayer as we start tonight. Father, we thank you and we bless you for the privilege and the opportunity that is ours to be with each other tonight, even as we study in your Word. We ask that you would enliven us to your Word, open us up to receive it, and we bless you and we praise you for it. Thank you for allowing us to come back together again after all these months on a Wednesday night. And we thank you for those who are here and for those who are yet on the way. Now, we ask for the inspiration of your Holy Spirit that we might be led and guided and directed in what to say tonight as we look into your Word. We thank you and we bless you for it. In Jesus' mighty name, amen. All right. Well, once again, we're glad that you're here tonight. Thank you for those who are watching with us online. We see you and we're grateful for you tuning in. We recognize there's so many different places that you could be studying, with which you could be studying, but you're tuned in with us tonight and we thank you. Thank you also for those who are in the house with us tonight. This is the first Wednesday in a couple of months, actually longer than that, more like three months that we have been recording and then posting it live. But we are actually live and in the room tonight. And we already experienced tonight what you don't get to see, and that's the little faux pause that happened. If we're recording, the faux pause that happened, you don't ever see it. But because we're live tonight, you get to see all of our miscues and mistakes. And I suppose like movies, they would be on a blooper reel, but we are grateful for everyone who is with us tonight. I don't know how many weeks we have left of this study tonight. I think that including tonight, it's just two, but that really depends on the Holy Spirit tonight. We have been studying about the tabernacle in the wilderness, and this has been a long study. I'm not afraid of long studies. I hope that you are not. I have taught you that the Old Testament is filled with types and shadows that find their culmination, a culmination in Jesus Christ. Jesus himself says that he did not come to abolish the law, but to fulfill it. And so, all of the Old Testament scripture finds its fulfillment in Jesus Christ. And particularly as it relates to the issues of sin and salvation, we find in Jesus Christ the fulfillment of that and the provision for it. Specifically tonight, we started last week talking about the offerings. And I recognize that when we read through the various texts, that it can be rather cumbersome as it talks about all of the little things that had to be done. And if you do this, then you do that. If you do this, then you do that. And if you do this, you do that. And it can be a bit confusing and a little bit, as I said, cumbersome. But I assure you that there's value and meaning in it all. So, last week, we started talking about the offerings and we talked specifically, talked specifically about the dedicatori offerings. And all the offerings, God gave specific instructions for them. And the interesting piece of it is that the instructions came out of the tabernacle that was now filled with God's glory, whereas the instructions for everything else that went before this, God gave to Moses on the mountain. But the instructions for the offerings came out of the tabernacle itself, which was now filled with the glory of God. And remember that I said that there were three primary offerings, the dedicatori offering, the expiatory offering, and then the complimentary offerings. We talked about the dedicatori offerings last week. Tonight, we're going to talk about the expiatory offering. So, let's look at the expiatory offerings, and I know that's one of those $12 words. So, what in the world does expiatory mean? And I've sort of broken it down for you a little bit. If you could throw up that next slide that, what's the next slide there? Am I skipping past something? Ah, yes. I looked at a particular text. Let's look at Exodus, chapter 40, verses 34 through 38 first, talking about the glory of God. "Then the cloud covered the tent of meeting, and the glory of the Lord filled the tabernacle." Moses was not able to enter the tent of meeting because the cloud had settled on it, and the glory of the Lord filled the tabernacle. Throughout all their journeys, whenever the cloud was taken up from over the tabernacle, the sons of Israel would set out. But if the cloud was not taken up, then they did not set out until the day when it was taken up. And then verse 38, "For throughout all their journeys, the cloud of the Lord was on the tabernacle by day, and there was fire in it by night, in the sight of all the house of Israel." So, that's talking about the glory that filled the tabernacle, and it's out of the tabernacle filled with the glory of God that now the instructions for it come. So, we come to the first of those offerings, which is the expiatory offering. What's that next slide, Minister Roof? Let's go past that. I'm not gonna read all that. If we could just slide past that to the slide after the scripture verses. All right. So, the word expiatory, it comes from the word expiate. That particular word means to atone for, to atone for. Specifically as it relates to scripture, it means to atone for sin or guilt. Therefore, expiatory from expiate. Now, there were two of these expiatory offerings, or two of these atonement offerings. They were first of all, the sin offering, and second of all, the trespass offering. They were designed to deal both with the sin and the sinner, the sin and the sinner. So, let's talk about the sin offering specifically. Leviticus, chapter four, we're going to look there, Leviticus, chapter four, verses one and two. And really, it's the entire chapter four, but it's much too long to read it in its entirety. So, I'm just gonna read the first two verses. "Then the Lord spoke to Moses, saying," speak to the sons of Israel, saying, "If a person sins," and I want you to note the next word carefully, "sins unintentionally in any of the things which the Lord has commanded not to be done, and commits any of them." So, now we get the first clue about what an expiatory offering is for. It's to atone for unintentional sins, unintentional sins. I often say that when we get up in the morning, and I'm sure today was no different than any other day, when we get up in the morning, we have no intention to do anything wrong. But our intention was to do everything right, to dot every i, to cross every t. But we also know that when we get ready to lay our heads down at night, there are, there's some confession that we need to do because we have fallen into sin, perhaps unintentionally, and yes, maybe even intentionally. Maybe somebody said or did something, or did something to us, and before we could stop ourselves, we said something we shouldn't have said. But this particular offering was for unintentional sin. You see, let's go on a little bit further. Leviticus, chapter six, 24 through 30. "Then the Lord said to Moses, saying, speak to Aaron and to his sons, saying, 'This is the law of the sin offering. In the place where the burnt offering is slain, the sin offering shall be slain before the Lord; it is most holy. The priest who offers it for sin shall eat it. It shall be eaten in a holy place, in the court of the tent of meeting. Anyone who touches its flesh will become consecrated. And when any of its blood splashes on a garment in a holy place, you shall wash what was splashed on. Also, the earthenware vessel in which it was boiled shall be broken. And if it was boiled in a bronze vessel, then it shall be scoured and rinsed with water. Every male among the priests may eat of it; it is most holy. But no sin offering, of which any of the blood is brought into the tent of meeting to make atonement, in the holy place shall be eaten; it shall be burned with fire.'" Now, this is an example of what I was saying when we began to look at the different texts, and they seem to be so intricate and cumbersome, it's almost hard to keep track. You almost need a scorecard of what's happening. But I assure you that God had a reason for being specific. Remember that it was designed to deal with sin and salvation pre-Jesus. And these offerings had to be continually made. Whereas when we come over into the New Testament, we see something different. So, Paul tells us in 2 Corinthians 5:21, he says this, "He made him who knew no sin to be sin on our behalf, so that we might become the righteousness of God in him." So, in the Old Testament, they had all these different animals that had to be sacrificed. They were sacrificed to atone for, to take away, or to, to, to make payment for, or to, to... I'm trying to find a better word for atone, to, to pay the price for our sin. But in Jesus, our heavenly Father made Jesus, who, remember, he was fully God and fully man. And as fully God, there was no sin in him. And so, he made him to be sin on our behalf, so that we might become the righteousness of God in him. So, the sin offering speaks of the death of Christ in terms of its victory over sin, its victory over sin. And male and female animals were involved in this sacrifice. Those were sacrifices from the herd, from the flock, from turtle doves, young pigeons, or in some instances, a tenth ephah of flour. But there were differences in the offering. It varied in terms of, first of all, the sin of an anointed priest. In other words, if a priest committed sin, this is what had to be done. Look at Leviticus, chapter four, verses three through 12. "If the anointed priest sins, so as to bring guilt on the people, then let him offer to the Lord a bull without defect as a sin offering, for the sin he has committed. He shall bring the bull to the doorway of the tent of meeting before the Lord, and he shall lay his hand on the head of the bull and slay the bull before the Lord. Then the anointed priest is to take some of the blood of the bull and bring it to the tent of meeting. And the priest shall dip his finger in the blood and sprinkle some of the blood seven times before the Lord, in front of the veil of the sanctuary." I'll return to that in a little bit. "The priest shall also put some of the blood on the horns of the altar of fragrant incense, which is before the Lord, in the tent of meeting. And all the blood of the bull he shall pour out at the base of the altar of the burnt offering, which is at the doorway, in the tent of meeting. He shall remove from it all the fat of the bull of the sin offering, the fat that covers the entrails, and all the fat which is on the entrails." I'll come back to that also. "And the two kidneys with the fat that is on them, which is on the loins and the lobe of the liver, which he shall remove with the kidneys." Now, I know we're reading this stuff, it's like, what difference does all of this make? It's symbolic for us, even as it was symbolic for them. Verse 11, "Just as it is," 10, I'm sorry, "just as it was removed from the ox of the sacrifice of peace offerings, and the priests offer them up in smoke on the altar of burnt offering. But the hide of the bull and all its flesh, with its head and its legs and its entrails, and its refuge, refuse, that is, all the rest of the bull, he is to bring out to a clean place outside the camp, where the ashes are poured out, and burn it on wood with fire. Where the ashes are poured out, it shall be burned." Now, that's what was to be done if an anointed priest sinned. Now, it was a big thing if an anointed priest sinned because the anointed priest was the one who was to be making sacrifice. So, if the anointed priest sinned, the anointed priest himself had to make atonement, and then basically, he had to be repurified. Remember, we were talking about the consecration of a priest, and so, it takes more. If you remember back to when we were talking about the necessity for ministers and pastors and bishops and all those who operate in ministry to be consecrated, and how it was a bigger thing, God viewed it as a bigger thing when those individuals committed sin versus just regular members in the pew. In other words, what I'm saying, more is expected of those who would serve before the Lord and serve the people before the Lord. And so, a greater sacrifice had to be made. But then it goes further to what happens if the whole congregation sins? So, the sin of a whole congregation, and in this sense, talking about all the nation of Israel. If the whole congregation sinned, what happens then? Well, we go on from verse 12 and verse 13, still in Leviticus, chapter four. "Now, if the whole congregation of Israel commits error, and the matter escapes the notice of the assembly, and they commit any of the things which the Lord has commanded not to be done, and they become guilty, when the sin which they have committed becomes known, then the assembly shall offer a bull of the herd for a sin offering, and bring it before the tent of meeting. Then the elders of the congregation shall lay their hands on the head of the bull before the Lord, and the bull shall be slain before the Lord. Then the anointed priest is to bring some of the blood of the bull to the tent of meeting. And the priest shall dip his finger in the blood and sprinkle it seven times before the Lord, in front of the veil. He shall put some of the blood on the horns of the altar, which is before the Lord, in the tent of meeting, and all the blood he shall pour out at the base of the altar of burnt offering, which is at the doorway of the tent of meeting. He shall remove all of its fat from it and offer it up in smoke on the altar. He shall also do with the bull, just as he did with the bull of the sin offering; thus he shall do with it. So, the priests shall make atonement for them, and they will be forgiven. Then he is to bring out the bull to a place outside the camp, and burn it as he has burned the first bull; it is the sin offering for the assembly." Please note that though they seem similar, these sacrifices are slightly different. Because again, the first one, we were talking about the priests, but now we're talking about the congregation. Then there was a third one. What about if a ruler sins? What if a ruler sins? How do you deal with the sin of a ruler? Start at verse 22, still in Leviticus, chapter four. "When a leader sins, and unintentionally does any one of all the things which the Lord, his God, has commanded not to be done, and he becomes guilty. If his sin, which he has committed, is made known to him, he shall bring for his offering a goat, a male without defect. He shall lay his hand on the head of the male goat and slay it in a place where they slay the burnt offering before the Lord; it is a sin offering. Then the priest is to take some of the blood of the sin offering with his finger and put it on the horns of the altar of burnt offering. And the rest of its blood shall be poured out at the base of the altar of burnt offering." And then verse 26, "All its fat he shall offer up in smoke on the altar, as in the case of the fat of the sacrifice of the peace offerings. Thus the priests shall make atonement for him in regard to his sin, and he will be forgiven." Notice, it is different still. Then we come to the individual, verses 27 through 35. What if the individual sins? Now, if any one of the common people, note how the textbook said, "common people." If any one of the common people sins, how? Unintentionally. Remember, we're talking about unintentional sins. "In doing any of the things which the Lord has commanded not to be done, and becomes guilty, if his sin, which he has committed, is made known to him, then he shall bring for his offering a goat." Note this time, when it was a ruler, it was a male. Now, it's a female without defect for his sin, which he has committed. "He shall lay his hand on the head of the sin offering, and shall slay the sin offering at the place of the burnt offering. The priest shall take some of his blood with his finger and put it on the horns of the altar of the burnt offering, and all the rest of its blood he shall pour out at the base of the altar. Then he shall remove all its fat, just as the fat was removed from the sacrifice of peace offerings. And the priest shall offer it up in smoke on the altar for a soothing aroma to the Lord; thus the priests shall make atonement for him, and he will be forgiven. But if he brings a lamb as his offering for a sin offering, he shall bring in a female without defect. He shall lay his hand on the head of the sin offering and slay it for a sin offering in the place where they slay the burnt offering. The priest is to take some of the blood of the sin offering with his finger and put it on the horns of the altar of burnt offering. And all the rest of its blood he shall pour out at the base of the altar." Last verse, verse 35. "Then he shall remove all its fat, just as the fat of the lamb is removed from the sacrifice of the peace offerings. And the priests shall offer them up in smoke on the altar, on the offerings by fire to the Lord; thus the priests shall make atonement for him in regard to his sin, which he has committed, and he will be forgiven." There's a lot of blood here, isn't it? But you see, after the identification with the one who offers the sacrifice, and after the blood has been applied, all the sin offerings were then taken outside the camp, any distance up to six miles from where they were encamped, and completely burned. Now, I said all this has great symbolism. So, what does this symbolize? Well, look at Hebrews, chapter 13, verses 11 and 12. Hebrews 13, 11 and 12. "For the bodies of those animals, whose blood is brought into the holy place by the high priest, as in the sin offering for sin, are burned outside the camp." Look at verse 12. "Therefore, Jesus also, that he might sanctify the people through his own blood, suffered where?" Outside the gate. Think about this for a moment. Where was Gaugatha? Where was Mount Calvary? It was outside the gate of the city, outside of the temple. So, the sacrifice was taken outside. Jesus suffered outside for us. 2 Corinthians, chapter 5, 21, we looked at that already, but it bears repeating. God made Jesus, who knew no sin, to be sin on our behalf. Why? So that we might become the righteousness of God in him. Now, let's go back to the specificity of it. All this stuff about the kidneys and the entrails and, you know, all that gory stuff, you know, you're reading, like, I don't wanna hear all this. Why, why, why is that significant? It's significant to show us the seriousness of sin. And not just the seriousness of sin, but the severity of divine judgment on sin. So, different parts of the animal were to be burned. Leviticus, chapter four, verse 11 says, "But the hide of the bull and all its flesh with its entrail," with its head, rather, "and its legs and entrails, and its refuse." All these things were burned, and they were burned outside of the camp because that's how serious sin is to God, and that's how severe God deals with sin. You know, we've got to get past this sort of cavalier, nonchalant way that we look at sin. Oh, it's no big deal. Oh, it was just a white lie. Oh, it was just a little sin. Do you not realize that to God, sin is sin? There is no little sin to God. This thing that none of y'all do, but you know, some believers do, because I didn't do X, Y, and Z. I'm not a sinner. It's sort of like the Pharisee that stood in front of the synagogue saying, "I thank you, God, that I'm not a poor miserable sinner like that poor miserable tax collector in the back." To God, sin is sin. And remember, I gave you a definition of sin early on in this study, that sin is literally a declension of the will of God. It's, it's, it's when you walk outside of whatever God's will is for your life. And because that is true, understand therefore, that means that anything can become sin in your life. If God has not ordained it for you, if it's not part of God's will for your life, that thing or those things are sin. Now, obviously, I'm talking about things that God has not already said are sin. Because there are some things that are good that can become sinful to you. Do you all see that? Okay, now, that's not new. Those of you who've been with me a long time, you've heard me say that over and over and over again. It bears repeating. So that we can stop looking down our noses over top of our glasses at everybody else. Or look at them. They're such a miserable sinner. Paul says that some of us were just like that, past tense. We were before Jesus got hold of us. And some of us, Jesus is still trying to get hold of. Amen. So, let's look at that a little bit closer. What were those particular parts and their more specific meaning? Well, first of all, was the skin, the skin. And the skin represents the attractiveness. Another word for attractive is winsome, or the winsomeness or the attractiveness of sin. Hello, sin is attractive. You know, I've taught you this. You know, I grew up in the holiness tradition, hearing the preacher all the time saying, "The world ain't got nothing to offer you." That's a lie. I mean, if you carry it to its logical conclusion, no, it doesn't, but the world does have something to offer, otherwise, there wouldn't be so many people out there in the world. Amen. Those of you who are out in the world, you know what I'm talking about. It had something to offer. And, and, and so, the sin of the bullock was the bullock's most attractive part, its hide. It was its most... It was its most attractive part. And what you and I need to remember, not just for ourselves, but also for those whom we tend to judge. And that is, that sin has certain pleasures. The writer of Hebrews in chapter eleven, verse twenty-five, he puts it this way. Choosing rather to endure ill treatment with the people of God than to enjoy the passing pleasures of sin. See, the Old Testament tells us that the pleasures of sin are but for a season. They don't endure. But they're, they are pleasurable. I asked this one time on a Sunday morning, those of you who remember your B.C. days, why did you stay out there so long? And the answer is because you liked it. The second one was the flesh. The flesh, now, what does the flesh represent? The flesh represents the hard to control, the undisciplined, the unruly nature of sin. I didn't put this text up. I didn't put it up. But I, I want to read it real quick, and Minister Ruth, you can experiment with it to see if you can pop it up there like I taught you. Amen. We still have folks learning back there. But this is a little on-the-fly test. If, if, if you, if you go to Romans, chapter seven, you all are familiar with this chapter, or at least you should be. Chapter, Minister Ben too, you know where I'm going? Do you know where I'm going? Romans, chapter, chapter, uh, seven. I could, I could read a whole lot more. But let's start at verse fourteen. Romans eight, beginning at verse fourteen. Romans eight, fourteen through twenty-five. All right, we'll see if we can get that up on the screen for you. Uh, so those of you at home, you can follow along. I'm, I'm going to begin, to begin reading. When, when you get it up, just click on it and it should pop up on the screen. All right. For we know that the law is spiritual. For I am of flesh, sold into bondage to sin. For what I am doing, I do not understand. You, you, you all listen to this and see if this describes you at all. For I'm not practicing what I would like to do, but I am doing the very thing I hate. But if I do the very thing I do not want to do, I agree with the law, confessing that the law is good. So now, no longer am I the one doing it, but sin which dwells in me. For I know that nothing good dwells in me, that is, in my flesh. For the willing is present in me, but the doing of good is not. For the good that I want, I do not do, but I practice the very evil that I do not want. I find then the principle that is evil is present in me, the one who wants to do good. For I joyfully concur with the law of God in the inner man. But I see a different law in the members of my body, waging war against the law of my mind and making me a prisoner of the law of sin which is in my members. Wretched man that I am, who will set me free from the body of this death? Thanks be to God, through Jesus Christ our Lord. So then, on the one hand, I myself, with my mind, am serving the law of God, but on the other, with my flesh, the law of sin. Now, I said the flesh is the wantonness or hard to control, undisciplined, unruly nature of sin. Galatians five, nineteen and twenty says, now, the deeds of the flesh are evident, which are immorality, impurity, sensuality, verse twenty, idolatry, sorcery, iniquity, strife, jealousy, outbursts of anger, disputes, dissensions, factions. The Bible says that the spirit is willing. But oftentimes, we don't flow in the spirit. Why? Because the flesh, remember, the flesh is that hard to control, undisciplined, unruling part of us. The flesh is weak. And so they sacrifice the flesh. How many times have you heard me say, or heard other people say, that we need to crucify the flesh? You heard that said? Because it's our flesh. Now, now, our flesh is not where sin begins. Sin begins in the mind. Ooh, did I even put that down here? Yeah, I did. It's the next one. Let me, let me go there, so I don't get ahead of myself. The head was the next piece. The head, the, the willingness of sin. God looks on us and sees the heart, that should be heart, there should be a T on that, the heart that is set on sin. But what's in your head? What's in your head? Talk to me. I got people, your brain, your mind. So your mind is where sin begins. How so? As a person thinks. Now, I know the text says in the heart, but when it talks about the heart, it's not talking about that muscle that pumps blood. It's talking about the emotional part of you. It's still talking about your head. As a person thinks, you think with your head, uh, but there's a difference between head knowledge and heart knowledge. So is he. Paul lists that one of the pieces of armor is what? The helmet of salvation that covers your head. Why? Because salvation is to be covering our heads, covering how we, we got to think, protect how we think. All right? So that's the willingness of sin. It begins in the mind. Now, I know you all are wholly sanctified, you know, running for your lives, got Jesus on your side, you know. I, I know all that about you all, but, but how are you can confess tonight that before I did it, I thought it? I might even create some scenarios. Let, let, let me see how I can do this and, and get away with it. Let me see how I can do this and, and not get caught. So what's behind it? Genesis, chapter six, verse five says this. Then the Lord saw that the wickedness of man was great on the earth, and that every intent of the thoughts of his heart was only evil continually. What's the definition of wickedness that I gave you? Does anybody remember? This is test time. The Bible calls you wicked when you know the right thing to do, but you refuse to do it. You're called wicked. So God saw that the wickedness of man, it wasn't that they didn't know the right thing to do. They knew what the right thing to do, but they wouldn't do it. They were wicked. Any of y'all know any wicked people? Any of you've been, any of you've been wicked? And you're like, amen. And so, 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 so this offering of the head was part of that. Then there was the legs. These are the parts that were taken out in the wilderness and burned. The legs represent the waywardness of sin. We don't want to walk in sin. We walked in sin long enough. When you walk in sin, it's going to take you places that you don't want to go. And it's going to cause you to stay there longer than you intended. So the legs were burned. Isaiah fifty-three, six says this, "All of us like sheep have gone astray. Each of us has turned to his own way, but the Lord has caused the iniquity of us all to fall on him." Again, Jesus took our place. Then there was the innards. Or in other words, the, the, the entrails. The innards speak of the wickedness of sin. The wickedness of sin. Jeremiah, chapter seventeen, verse nine. "The heart is more deceitful than all else, and is desperately sick. Who can understand it?" When something gets all down on the inside of you. Again, I, my, 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 my brother and my sisters tonight, I, I, I know you all wholly and righteous. I, I know you, I know you are. So you have to think back to, back in the day, back in yesteryear. When there are some things, and maybe a way of life of which you were absolutely convinced was the right way for you, until the Lord came along and did two things, changed your mind and changed your heart. Y'all been saved all your life? Y'all been saved all your life? Doesn't it make sense? You all remember that? Huh? Praise God that our minds and our hearts were changed, amen? Okay, but there was a time. Sin, you see, is so wicked. I don't care if you're talking about seeing if you can get away with eating a cookie as a kid. Y'all remember that? My mom said, "Don't touch them." You kept looking at that pile of cookies, she won't miss one. And maybe, maybe Ben too, I could set that pile back up just the right way, that even though one or two is missing, it won't look like it. She, she won't be able to see. And that's how sin grabs hold of us. Here's the thing. When you get away with it, it causes you to be bold. "Well, I got away with that. I can get away with it again. And maybe I can go a little further this time." Am I talking to anyone in here? Anybody know what I'm talking about? Jose, you know what I'm talking about? You know, it just, it sort of sneaks up on you. And before you know it, you're far away from where you want it to be. Then the next thing you know, you got to pay the consequences. The last part of this was the dung. The dung. The dung speaks of the wastefulness of sin. The text that we read today called this the refuse, not refuge, R.E.F.U.S.E., the refuse. This is the nasty part. This is the waste. You see, it almost seems to be an oxymoron. I start off by saying that sin is attractive, that it's pleasurable. Now, I'm telling you that it's like dung, is wasteful. See, that's the trap. It draws you in because of the pleasure. And it uses you up and then leaves you on a dung heap. Do you remember Jesus telling the parable of the prodigal son? Do you, hello? The prodigal son demanded of his father his inheritance. Now, when do you normally get an inheritance? When the person dies. He said, "No, I don't want to wait until he die. Give me my inheritance now." And he took his inheritance and he went off into a distant country and squandered it in riotous living. He was living the party life until all his money ran out. How, how much time have I gone? How far? I've, I've got fifteen minutes left? All right, amen. And, and when his money ran out, his friends ran out. He was left doing what? Feeding pigs, which was reprehensible for a Jew. Jews didn't have nothing to do with the pork, alive or dead. Why? Because he was enjoying the pleasures of sin. And it was pleasurable. He was having a good time. But when it was over, when the money was gone, he was left on the dung heap. Sin is wasteful. Did you hear me? Sin is wasteful. Try this so many. How, how many of you have had those moments in your life where you have wished that you got a particular message earlier in life? Where you may even have felt, "I wasted too much time." That's the wastefulness of sin. The good news is, is that God redeems the times. James, chapter one, verse fifteen says this. "Then when lust has conceived," here's that process I was talking about. "It gives birth to sin. And when sin is accomplished, it brings forth death." Can I talk about marriage for a moment? Solomon, King Solomon, was uniquely qualified to talk about sexual sin. Remember, he had over four, I think it was four hundred and twenty wives and concubines combined. And so in Proverbs, he gives a lot of counsel and advice to young men. One of the things he says, you need to be careful not to commit adultery. He says, because if you commit adultery, what will happen is that you will give your best years to another man. In other words, when you get caught, she's putting your behind out, you're going to be looking on, on the sidewalk, looking through the picture window, and seeing another man wearing your smoker's jacket and sitting in your easy chair. And at that moment, you'll ask how I wished I'd listened to counsel and advice. Sin is wasteful. Lust, when it's conceived, gives birth to sin, and when sin is accomplished, it brings forth death. Now, in the sin offering, every aspect of sin had to come under God's severest judgment. And that tells us that God has no halfway measures when it comes to sin. He has dealt with it in its totality, and he has dealt with it with finality. But just before I end this particular section, and I'm not going to get to the trespass offering tonight. I, I had lofty ideas of being able to do the sin offering and the trespass offering tonight. Nah, ain't gonna happen. But let me talk about quickly the day of atonement, because the day of atonement goes along with the sin offering. The great day of atonement is, it's delineated for us in Leviticus, chapter sixteen, the whole chapter. Uh, but I want us to look at Leviticus sixteen, twenty-nine through thirty-four. But just before we do, recognize that the high priest, only the high priest, was allowed to officiate. And that the day of atonement had two pieces. It had propitiation and substitution. So Leviticus, chapter sixteen, verses twenty-nine through thirty-four, we read these words. Did I put that up there? I didn't put it up there? Well, we're not going to read those words. So let's, let's come to, uh, propitiation. Propitiation was represented in the slain goat, the slain goat, the goat that was actually killed. The blood from the goat would be taken into the most holy place. In other words, behind the veil. And remember, only the high priest could go in, and then only once a year on the day of atonement. So on the day of atonement, a goat was sacrificed. The blood was then taken. The blood was then taken in, sprinkled on the mercy seat one time, and then seven times before the mercy seat. How many times on the mercy seat? One time. How many times before the mercy seat? Seven times. Remember the significance of numbers. You see, once was enough for God. But seven was necessary to convince humanity of its preciousness and its efficacy. Once on the mercy seat, the throne of God. Seven times before it. That's propitiation. The second part of that is substitution. We understand substitution. Jesus was our great substitute. And substitution is represented in the live goat. So propitiation is represented in the slain goat, but substitution is represented in the live goat. How so? The live goat was identified with the blood of the slain goat. In that, it became the sin bearer for the entire nation. So the sins of the nation were laid on the live goat. And then the live goat was led away into an uninhabited place. Do I have Leviticus nine and ten up there? I didn't do that one either? Okay, all right, all right. So that ought to be good news to us. I, I think I'm going to read it though, so that you could, you could have that. And I'm just about out of time here. Give me a couple more minutes and we will be finished for tonight. Leviticus sixteen, verses nine and ten. Then Aaron shall offer the goat on which the lot for the Lord fell, and make it a sin offering. But the goat on which the lot for the scapegoat fell shall be presented alive before the Lord, to make atonement upon it, and to send it into the wilderness as the scapegoat. You all know that term scapegoat? Okay? Somebody else did something on your job, but they made you the scapegoat. All right? The goat didn't do anything, but the goat was the scapegoat. That's, this, that's, this is where that term comes from. All right? So it ought to be good news then, as we look at this and think about the symbolism, when we recognize that Jesus was our scapegoat. You, you hadn't heard it put that way, had you? Look at somebody tell them, "Jesus was my scapegoat." Now, now let me give you scripture. Psalm one oh three, verse twelve. I know I put that there. You had the glory to God. As far as the east is from the west, so far has he removed our transgressions from us. Remember that they would, they led, after the sins of the people were transferred to the goat, laid on the goat, the goat was led into an uninhabited place. As far as the east is from the west, so far has he removed our sin from us. Micah, chapter seven, verse nineteen. He will again have compassion on us. He will tread our iniquities underfoot. Yes, you will cast all their sins into the depths of the sea. A story was told of, uh, a slave who worked in the house. It was an older man, he'd always worked there. And he had learned to read. And remember, in many places, most places in the south during slavery, it was illegal for slaves to know how to read. And so he was in the library where he's supposed to be cleaning. And when he would go into the library, he would read different books. And so when he went into the library one day, the master caught him reading the Bible. And the master told him, "You're not supposed to be reading, especially not the Bible." And he apologized, and so he took his Bible from him. He said, "You don't understand what you're reading anyway." The next day, he came back in there, he called him again. He said, "Now I know you don't know how to read, because I took your Bible." He said, "Yes, sir, you did." But you see here, this here is an encyclopedia. And the encyclopedia tells me how deep the deepest ocean is. And yesterday, I was reading Micah seven nineteen, where he casts my sins into the depths of the sea. That's substitution. It's not that I wasn't guilty, but he became my substitute. Isaiah thirty-eight, seventeen. Lo, for my own welfare, I had great bitterness. It is you who has kept my soul from the pit of nothingness, for you have cast all my sins behind your back. None of us knows what's behind God's back. He's eternity. What's behind his back? And then Hebrews ten, verse seventeen. And their sins and their lawless deeds, God speaking, I will remember no more. Last one, John, chapter one, verse twenty-nine. The next day, he saw Jesus coming to him and said, "Behold, the Lamb of God, who takes away the sin of the world." So on the day of atonement, there were two aspects. Propitiation, where the blood of the goat was sprinkled on the mercy seat and poured out seven times, sprinkled before it. But then substitution. In both instances, Jesus is our propitiation, and he is our substitution. And that ought to give you great comfort and great joy. Why? Because not only all the sin you've ever committed has been atoned for, but when you are in Christ Jesus and you have Christ Jesus living in you, then all the sin you will ever commit, he has become the substitute. That's why every time a call for salvation is given, you don't have to come. Because you have the assurance of your salvation. All you need to do, according to John, is to confess your sins. And God is faithful and just to do what? To forgive you and to cleanse you from all unrighteousness. And if you be in Christ, you are new creation. The former things of old are finished and gone. Behold, all things have become new. Amen? All right. Any questions, since I actually have somebody in the room tonight? Any questions about any of this? I know this is complicated stuff, but it really is more simple than it appears. It's Jesus. All right. Well, praise the Lord. I want to give you, uh, an opportunity, opportunity to sow tonight, those of you who are watching. Uh, if you want to sow into this ministry, you want to give tonight, you may do so. Uh, we offer you, uh, multiple ways that you can give online. You can give using the GiveLify app. And we are listed in GiveLify as Kingdom Fellowship Christian Center, Charlotte, North Carolina. Listen, be certain that you have the right church in the right place. Uh, just this past week, I got a request for a refund from someone who had accidentally given to the wrong Kingdom Fellowship. Uh, and happy to do that, because I mean, uh, uh, that was actually on Cash App. Cash App has a policy, but so does GiveLify, of accepting gifts that were intended for someone else. So if we know it, we have to give it back. It was not a problem. It was almost instantaneous. No sooner had they given it than they realized they had made a mistake. So be certain that you're giving to Kingdom Fellowship Christian Center, those four words, in Charlotte, North Carolina. You can give through PayPal the same way. Kingdom Fellowship Christian Center, Charlotte, North Carolina, or our website, kingdomfellows.org. Or you can give using the Cash App, which is dollar sign Kingdom Fellows. Dollar sign Kingdom Fellows. Whatever way you give, we invite you to give. If you're in the house and you'd like to give tonight, we invite you to give as well. Amen? Deacon Angela is here, and she'd be happy to receive your offering from you tonight, if you'd like to give unto the Lord. Just before we begin to pray, are there any prayer requests in the room? As I started tonight, I asked you to remember to pray for Lady Cece, uh, who, uh, is suffering the effects of the second vaccination today that she had today. Keep her in your, your prayers. I, I don't know exactly how she feels, because it affects people differently. But I do remember when I had the second one, I felt like a Mack truck had run me over. Don't ask me how I know what a Mack truck feels like. But I, I just, I just felt that bad. So keep her in, in your prayers. Prayerfully, she'll be passed it come the morning, because no sooner did it come on me than it left me. In that regard, and most people say the same thing. It generally lasts about one to two days. So are there any prayer requests in the room? We certainly want to be in prayer for Dr. Adia Strange, as she continues to recuperate and recover, uh, in the hospital. We're praying for Sister Vicky, and we want to encourage you to continue in your prayers of her. And if you haven't had the opportunity to do so, to reach out. Yes, Minister Ruth? Yes, Minister Ruth's brother David. We want to pray for him. David is in Texas? Oh, he's in, duh, he's in Puerto Rico. Uh, to pray for she and Jose's brother David in, in Puerto Rico. Other requests? Well, amen. Let's, let's go before the Lord then, shall we? Father, it's in the name of Jesus that we come to you now. We ask you, O God, to incline your ear unto us, as we offer up unto you our prayers, not only of praise and adoration and of thanksgiving, our prayers of confession and atonement, but Lord, even also our prayers of supplication. Lord, we thank you for what you have done for us and what you are even right now at this moment doing for us. We worship and adore you because of who you are. We thank you that you forgive us when we sin and that you cover our sins, and we bless you for that knowledge this night. We ask you, O God, now in the name of Jesus, that you would show forth your mercy to each and every one of us as we stand in the gap for those who need your presence and your power tonight. In particular, O God, we lift up our Sister Adia Strange tonight, not only her, but her entire family. We thank you, O God, for what you have done for her already. And we ask, O God, that you would bring to completion the good work that you have begun in her. That, Lord, as she turns her head to the wall, that like that king of old, that you would grant unto her more years, O God, that she may complete the tasks that you have given to her while she is here on this earth. Lord, we thank you that it is not yet her time. And so we ask you, O God, to make that clear to her, so that she would have a will, O God, to, to recover and to, to move on, to go on to see what the end will be. And we bless you for that. We pray for Sister Vicky, that this persistent cough that she has, O God, that the doctors seem unable to do anything about. Lord, we know their limitations, but we know that you are limitless. And so, God, we place her into your care, and we ask, O God, that you would supernaturally touch her body, from the crown of her head to the soles of her feet, and that you would bring her healing and wholeness now, in Jesus' name. Even while we're praying, O God, let her know your healing touch. You are Jehovah Rapha. You are the God that heals us, and we thank you now. Lord, touch my wife tonight. Touch Lady Cece tonight. Touch her body, O God. Lord, make the, 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 the side effects of this vaccination lessen them, remove them, O God. No, God, don't lessen them, remove them now. I pray in the name of Jesus and restore her to wholeness in Jesus' name. We bless you, and we praise you for it. Lord, I pray for other situations. I pray for David tonight, in Puerto Rico, Lord, that you would touch him. Lord, you know his condition, you know his situation. You know his body, you know the doctor's reports. And we curse the doctor's report, and we speak healing virtue to his body in the name of Jesus. And we thank you for doing it for him, not for his glory, not for our glory, but for your own glory. And we bless you for it. Now, O God, we pray for Kingdom Fellowship. We pray for our growth, O God. We thank you that we're here in the room tonight. But we pray, O God, that you would move upon the hearts of your people, for those who are already a part of us. And yes, O God, for those who are yet to join us, that, God, we would reach them with the claims of your gospel and for your glory. We bless you for it right now. Lord, I lift up our churches all over the world that are a part of Kingdom Fellowship of Churches International, and all with the pastors. Lord, I pray, uh, for church in, uh, the UAE, churches in the UAE, for churches in, on the west coast of, of Africa. And I bless you for the northwest coast of Africa, particularly in Liberia. I pray for Bishop Emmanuel Jones and for Bishop Heavensent. I pray for those congregations here in the United States. And I lift up the bishops that are on our board of bishops and the members that, that are on our board. We lift them up to you right now. And then, O God, I pray for Pastor Paul, for whom, uh, his cancer has returned, that God, even as he's undergoing chemo, that, Lord, you would touch his body and that you would destroy every cancerous cell now. In the name of Jesus, cause his numbers to go back down and bring him to wholeness of health. I pray in the name of Jesus, and we thank you for doing it, and we bless your name. Now I pray for everyone that's in the room tonight. I pray blessing upon their lives, O God. Lord, that the issues of their life that you would address. I speak prosperity into their life. I speak peace over their households. I speak peace over their relationships. I thank you, God, that you have your way in their businesses, that you cause increase to come. I bless you right now, that they would have everything that they need and more also, so they might be able to contribute to the work of this, to the needs of the saints around them. And I do bless you for it. And I thank you, God, that you open the door for us to be where you would have us to be. Lord, show us where that is, and then provide the means and the measures and the resources in order to accomplish that. Bless our efforts and outreach, O God. Lord, even right now, work upon the hearts of those whom the Holy Spirit would put in our path that we might witness to and invite to come into your house. And we bless you for it right now. Thank you for those that are coming, and we bless your name. Lord, even as we're in transition again in our music department, Lord, bring whom you would have to be there, and we thank you for it, and bless your name for it in Jesus' name. Now, O God, thank you for hearing and answering our prayer, and we thank you in advance for what you will do for us now in Jesus' name. Amen and amen. Well, God bless you tonight for being in the house. Come on, give God a praise, shall we? Can you, while you're in the house, give God a praise? Thank you so much for being with us. Leave your offering, if you have it tonight, with Deacon Angela. And you're dismissed. Go in peace. The Lord bless you and keep you. Amen.